Good afternoon and welcome to the Meet the Candidates Forum hosted by the Noon Kewanis and Access Television. I am Mike Breen, a member of the Noon Kewanis Board. It's our privilege to provide an opportunity for residents to become familiar with the people running for city council office. Today's forum will be broadcast several times on Access Television prior to elections on Tuesday, November 6th. We will also upload a link to social media in the city website. I am pleased to be your moderator today. Sarah Duffy will be here to moderate the final two forums tomorrow and Friday. Today we will meet candidates for Ward Two, Scott Kwame and Scott Rachels. Ward Two represents citizens in generally the northeast part of the city. These residents vote at the National Guard Armory. We'll open today with the candidates introducing themselves and sharing with us why they are running for city council. They will have three minutes for this introduction. After that, we'll go into question and answer sessions. We'll rotate who answers first so there's no unfair advantage. The answer period will be two minutes unless I note differently. Gene Bowman will serve as timekeeper today and will wave a yellow flag when there are thirty seconds remaining and the red flag when the two minutes are up. All candidates have seen these questions, so there's no unfair advantage on going first. We'll start the clock when the candidates begin speaking. If you need me to repeat a question, please ask me to do so. We'll conclude today by offering each candidate the opportunity to give a two-minute closing statement. We ask that the audience please respectfully listen to each candidate's answers and avoid conversations during the forum. Please hold all applause until the end of the forum. Finally, please take this time to turn off your cellphones. Thank you. Is everyone ready? If so, we'll start having the candidates introduce themselves. Please state your name and why you are running for city council. We'll start with Mr. Kwame.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you to those who've taken the time to come and be a part of this forum today and for those who are watching on the recording, Pig Access that way as well. I appreciate your interest in wanting to know more about how our city works and get to know us a little better. I first was introduced to Fergus Falls in nineteen seventy-five when I arrived here as a junior in high school and was living in the dorm at Hillcrest Academy and graduated from there in nineteen seventy-seven. Went on to Morehead State University, graduated from there in eighty-two with a degree in speech and radio, TV, film. Thought I was gonna end up in construction and worked in construction for some time, but also then got into the food business and have worked primarily in sales and management most of my life. But early on, I worked at a ski resort, I've driven a beat truck, I've done lots of different things and it's been quite a life. But the concessions business is where I landed for quite a while and for twelve years I ran my own business doing that. My wife Becky works at the hospital here in town, she's been there for over thirty-five years. And we've been married nearly twenty-five years, it'll be twenty-five now in March. Our daughter Christina just graduated from Hillcrest in twenty fifteen and has gone on now to pursue nursing and is starting her nursing career, having just completed some schooling in that. I work for Indigo Sign Works, a company based in Fargo, North Dakota. I'm a salesman, I work primarily from my home, in my home office. I work in service sales and in corporate sales, I deal with customers all over the country every day. I've been there for over four years and I'm active at Bethel Church. Our family has been a part of Bethel Church since the mid-eighties. When I landed here after traveling around and doing the various things, ski resorts and whatnot everywhere else, I landed here in the mid-eighties, I've been here now over thirty years. I love living here in Fergus Falls, I think this is a terrific place to live. I think it's a great place to raise a family, I think it's just, I think it's just a really terrific place to be. And I think everybody ought to know that. I've got family here, it's a real crossroads for the people that I know. And we've got lakes, rivers, forests, prairies, it's a terrific place to be. Why run for the city council? The three main items on my list are economic development, maintaining the assets of the city, and bringing some vision and a long-term viewpoint to the decision-making process of the council. I'm gonna make the case that we need to save the Kirkbride, we need to develop that asset and adapt it for reuse. For economic purposes, to respect the history of it and to make the most of what we've got of this treasure right in our, right in our yard. We need to be patient. A few years, a few weeks ago, the City Daily Journal had this little story for the kids about landmarks of the United States. We've got a landmark in our, right here in our city and we need to capitalize on this landmark, just the way that San Antonio has with their river and with their Alamo. We can do both. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rachels.
Hello, I'm Scott Rachels, I'm the current councilman in World War Two. I lived in Fergus Falls all my life. I've went to high school here and I got married here. I have a wife named Cindy and a daughter named Megan, who is married with a husband named Sam. I have a great son-in-law and a grandson named Landon. I've worked in the city ever since two thousand, or two thousand, excuse me, two thousand, nineteen seventy-six and I've currently own a business called Scott's Machine Shop since two thousand and two. The reason I want to run, or running again for city council is to continue on the work we've done in the last eight years. We've come forward, we've got great motivation of moving ahead. I enjoy my time in the seat, I enjoy doing, I love this city. There's just a few things we need to get done some more, keep going that great momentum and I'm not gonna go along as Scott, as much as Scott did, I'm kind of a short-to-the-point deal, but the best thing is the city has given me a great business and my biggest thing is to give back to the city and that's what I wanna continue on doing. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll start with the questions. Question number one, and you'll each have two minutes. The first one, we'll start with Mr. Kwame. The city's twenty eighteen budget is just over forty-five point five million dollars annually. Please tell us about your budget and finance experience demonstrating how you would be fiscal, a fiscally responsible candidate.
Thank you, Mike. Well, first of all, I was a small business owner for twelve years. I had to learn to balance the revenue and the expenses, make payroll, leverage debt, leverage your investments, maintain reserves for the unknowns, for the unforeseen. And I believe that I've learned an awful lot through the School of Hard Knocks and also through just being in school. I minored in Business Administration when I was in college. I am also a member of the Finance Facility Team at Bethel where we've got a one and a half million dollar budget. We deal with things like payroll and facility and, and just this week, as a matter of fact, last night as our team was meeting, we got to learn a little bit about how it's important to have those margins in your planning. Maybe some of you saw the fire trucks in the Bethel lot this last week, there was a little dilemma with our, one of our furnaces. And our plan to address our furnace issues next, next year in twenty nineteen got changed when the fire trucks rolled in and now we have to make a change to our furnaces yet this fall. It's good to have margins and it's good to understand what your plans are and I think that I've, I've learned an awful lot being a part of that team as well. I've been on several building projects, building teams, various kinds, where you need to learn to balance the wants and the needs against your available resources and the debt that you're able to leverage and work with. And in my work daily, I'm, at Indigo Sign Works, I deal with contracts every day. I know that it's important to pay attention to detail. If you have to do it over, it costs you twice as much. So do it right, do it correctly, do it efficiently, pay attention. And that's the way we do it in my business, I deal with, as I said, with contracts and stuff, we need to, need to pay attention to the details and that's, that's how I would approach the budgeting and finance of the city. Thank you.
Mr. Rachels.
Being, being in business, of course, is a, is a huge financial responsibility you have to do and following budgets and, and taking care of your finances is a huge thing, but in our city is kind of a built, that we have a, a management team, Bill Sonmore and Sandy, I see they're both in the audience, but they bring to us what we need to know and we have to just look at that. And Andrew and the mayor and I think Mr. Appert are both on the Tax Labor Committee, so we are, we build a budget, they bring it to us, we look at it and just our own common sense and our experiences, look at it and decide what we're gonna do with it. And through, through all the last years, we've been really good. I mean, we're so blessed with a great staff of all the people that take care of their budgets throughout the whole system and I just, I just gotta thank them, I mean, they do, they bring it to us, they make us look really good as councilmen to, to look at that budget they bring us and what we gotta do. And if we have a question on it, we ask it before we approve it and I think it's, it's just a responsibility of, of being conservative, I believe, and just watching over how they do their business and how the, how the, the budget's laid out. And once the budget's laid out, we don't have to look at that again until, I think we started in June again on it. And we're working on this one, we just come up and think in September, or I mean, in December we'll be talking about it again and finalizing it, so. It's just, it's a huge responsibility, but the staff makes us, makes us look pretty good doing it, makes it easy.
Thank you. Next question, this time starting with Mr. Rachels. What do you consider your top three priorities for the city and how do they fit into the budget?
The first thing I got on my list here are streets and of course, everybody, if you talk to anybody in this town, it's all about the streets. And over the last years, we've been working hard on getting the streets better. We just increased it twenty percent this year for next year. But the, the other problem we're gonna have is auto power closing and it's been something we've been working on for the last three years, four years, I think, since we found out they were gonna do it. And that's gonna be a huge hit to our budgets and our taxes. I believe it's eight percent of what they paid to the, to our budget, so it's, or to our tax. And so I'm really concerned about how we're gonna handle that and how we're gonna make, make up for that or if we have to raise our taxes to come that, to come to the, when they close up and I'm not looking forward to that at all, but it's gonna be something we have to deal with. And we haven't, we've been dealing with it for the last four years and it's, the process is coming along really good. The third priority, I just, they're all priorities in your, in your budget, I mean, everything, there's nothing just little, it's, everything has to be taken very seriously and you have to really work hard at it and that's kinda where I'm at with this budget, so.
Thank you. Mr. Kwame.
Thank you. Top three priorities, as I mentioned at the opening, for me, economic development, maintaining the assets of the city and bringing a vision, bringing a long-term view to the decision-making process. And the first area of economic development, again, I'm strongly in favor of preserving and preparing the Regional Treatment Center for adaptive reuse and redevelopment. I see this as just a gem that is waiting to be polished up and made a terrific part of our community here. The money for this can, in a large part, come from outside the city and the fear that has often been expressed about how this is gonna be laid on the city, I think is unfounded and overstated. The city has three and a half million dollars from the state now that can be used for a lot of productive ways to prepare the city, to prepare the treatment center for redevelopment and I think it ought to be done that way. I have another example I would point to is the dairy property. Recently, you know, one point two million dollars in grant funding has been secured for the development of the dairy property. That kinda grant money is out there and we can go after that kinda grant money for the work to be done at the RTC as well. Also under the category of economic development, I would talk about the riverfront and I think it's very important to carry through on the plans that have now been developed for the riverfront in the downtown area. Maintaining access and increasing access to the river and the riverfront area, I think is terrific. I'd like to see it developed for year-round use and for recreation and everything. And I've been involved in this by getting involved with the Downtown Riverfront Council on the Light the River In Sign Program and Light the City Program early on. Also under this category is jobs and industry, as Scott mentioned, the Who Lake Power Plant. Also we've got the CHS fertilizer plant, there's places that are gonna need to be filled and we need to work on those. Maintaining the assets, we've got the RTC, we've got the river, we've got streets, we've got the airport, we've got the library, golf course, parks, liquor store, there's a lot of assets to maintain and I feel that those are a big part of it. And again, I wanna bring the long-term view to the decision-making process on this. Thanks.
Alright, thank you. Next question, it's actually a two-part question, so I'll let you, and you get two minutes for each part of the question. We'll start with you, Mr. Kwame. The first part of the question is, this year we have seen changes in the city's economic development structure. What are your views on those changes and what is your vision for economic growth in Fergus Falls?
Well, the first thing is the development of the Greater Fergus Falls Corporation, I think is an excellent step in the right direction. We've got Bruce Thome on board in that organization now and frankly, I think a lot like he thinks. He's a very entrepreneurial person, he's got a mindset that's very business-oriented and I can really appreciate that. He's a very cheerful person and he's a very upbeat person. Bring in the Let Yes Program, I think this is, it's a great thing to build some enthusiasm. And an organization like that is gonna have greater flexibility and be able to be more responsive and work with the businesses to bring them into town. Wheels of government sometimes turn pretty slowly, whereas a private business structure can be more adaptable and move. I think that's a great thing. I guess my vision here would be to build on our existing assets. We've got a strong base of manufacturing and industry here with steel, aluminum, even plastic and some technology. I'd like to see more technology businesses brought to town and focus on some of that. But we've got some real opportunities we could focus on, we could look to recycling and recycling processing. There's been some conversations about how we might have worked with the county on something like that. We're in an agricultural area and an awful lot of our agricultural products from this area go down the highway someplace else. We could capitalize on a lot of that by bringing an agricultural processing plant here and, and there's talk of the possibility of a cheese plant being established in this area and I think we need to really go after it. The riverfront, the lakes area, the trails, all of these things need and will look to be built on as existing assets. And we've got terrific healthcare here and we can build on that as well. I think the action step is for us to invite business leaders to come and visit and they'll see the gem that we've got for them here. And I would also mention that I support the development of a comprehensive plan, the city staff has asked for it and I believe that we need to give them the goals to play the game. We need to provide the support they have asked for to do the job that we're asking them to do.
Okay, I'll stay with you on this as the second part of the question, it carries on to the economic development. Some of the challenges of the economic development are affordable housing, childcare availability and workforce shortages. Do you have any creative solutions for these?
Well, first of all, is the question of affordable housing, as this has been framed, I think that the assumption at the base of that question might be a little bit off. We've got a lot of housing in town and if you were to compare the rents and the cost of living here in Fergus to any larger city, anyplace, this is a pretty reasonable place to live. And my daughter just graduated, as I said, and she's gone off to college, she's in this category of less than fifteen dollars an hour to start with and, you know, I don't know that it's right for me to tell her, "Well, of course you should have an apartment of your own and not, you know, it should just be your right." Well, no, maybe she needs a roommate, you know? Make it work. On the area of childcare, I think this truly is a need and the city has some things that could be done probably to make this a better situation. Generally, I would say less government is better, the least amount of restrictions that we can put on childcare facilities, the better. Let's make it as easy as possible for people to get involved in this business and make it work. And the suggestion I would make here is we've got a lot of churches in town and some of these churches have got nursery facilities and other facilities that are empty, six and a half days of the week. I think I'd like to encourage our churches to step up and try to address this need for childcare in our city. And maybe some can band together, maybe some of them can work together to try and address this need in our city. The biggest question in this group, on this question though, for me, is the workforce shortages, this is the number one issue. And I think that the best way to address this is to make it, Fergus Falls, an attractive place to live. If it's an attractive place to live, people will be attracted to live here. Think of it as a magnet. If we are magnetic and drawing people here, or do we flip that thing around and we repel people from here? I think that we can make this place attractive, not only by having good retail, but we want that. But we need recreation, we need arts, we need education, we need healthcare, we need churches, we need the things that make it a great place to live and we've got a great base for that that we can build on. We've got unique features, we've got the RTC, we've got the river. And I think there's all kinds of great things that can happen here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rachels, we'll go back to the first part of the question. What are your views on the city's economic development structure changes and what's your vision for economic growth in Fergus Falls?
The big changes, of course, is the closing of a few box stores and, and right now, the attitude is we're in a slump and, or, and economic development is not there and, and of course, it's all, it's not just Fergus Falls, it's all over the country. And I believe that any business you're in, you're gonna have your low times and we're in a low time, but we still have a great city and we're gonna continue to grow. And right now, we're growing, I think the sales tax, we've been talking back and forth from two thousand sixteen to two thousand eighteen, is down very slightly even after the closings. So I still think we're on a good, good improvement of, of growing. What we can do for changes for, for the growth is, I believe, and Bruce Thome, Scott talked about Bruce Thome, has talked about these rumors and the negativity in our town, it's, you hear them all the time about different things and, and it's, there's never anything positive about what happens, it's always a negatives, you know, and with the target closing, that brought a lot of negatives to our town and I, and I believe that it was a bad thing, but it's not, it's not the end of Fergus Falls by any means. Fergus Falls is a very strong, loving, giving community and I, and I'm proud to be part of that community, but I wanna work on no rumors and no, or less negativity and have a more upbeat, upbeat attitude in, in the town. And it's just hard, if somebody comes down looking at our town and, and they look at it, they come a couple of days beforehand and they hear all this negativity, they aren't gonna wanna come here, they're gonna wanna go someplace else. So I think it's just a good thing, we just gotta change our attitude of positivity and everything's gonna come, I mean, we're doing really good as a city and I think it's, we just need to continue on that. Thank you.
Okay, and then the follow-up of the challenges, economic development, are affordable housing, childcare availability and workforce shortages. Do you have any creative solutions to any of these?
You know, there's, trying to figure out a solution, we've had, Amy's been working on the housing and childcare and she, I think the biggest thing is just to bring information to the, to people who wanna build housing here and have information on childcare, what, what we can do for them and what we can't do for them. There's certain things the city's allowed to do and there's certain things we can't do, but just more or less getting information about how you can start a business for childcare and how much housing and how we, we've done plenty of studies on housing, what, what we can afford, what we can't afford. And so I think that those things are being carried on for the last year or so, but I think that the workforce is an epidemic, it's everywhere. I mean, you can't go to any town and not see something that says, "Help wanted, help wanted," and anything from the service industry on up to the tech industry. And I don't know how to fix that. I mean, that's, in my own, in my own business, it's, I have older, older employees that, I don't know how I'm gonna replace them when they decide to retire, 'cause there's no younger employees to come along that has the skill that we do. And I'm not the only one, it's just every time we talk to a different people in business, it's how do we find skilled people and get them to stay here? I'm thankful my daughter decided to stay in Fergus. There's a lot of people coming back to Fergus, but I think the infrastructure and what we do and how we act as a council and how we act as, the positive attitudes in our town just gets people to come back in this town. So I just, I'm just gonna keep hitting on that, the positive attitude is what I'm gonna say. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, the next question, this one you get a full additional minute to answer because it has to do with the RTC. And we're gonna, if you wanna drink a water or something, Mr. Rachels, because we're going back to you again to start.
I don't think it's gonna take me a full extra minute on this one.
City council has made progress on reducing the footprint of the RTC campus. How would you continue to work with the council and the citizens on the next steps? And is there anything in the past that you would have done differently? If so, what and why?
Well, ever since I ran eight years ago, I've always been on the demolition of the RTC. I, I, this is where Scott and I differ completely. Scott thinks it's an asset to the city and I think it's a, it's a, it's a liability to the city and the building's used, the purpose is used, it's, I grew up in that building when my, my stepfather worked there and I was in that building from the time I was about thirteen years old till eighteen years old. So I know that building probably just as good as just about anybody else. But it's, it's time to move on and I believe the demolition for that, that campus needs to come, it's gonna, we got three and a half million dollars, we can only use it for demolition. I know Scott said we can do some repurposing, but we're gonna demo as much as we can with it this, this winter. I think it's, the footprint, the footprint needs to be reduced so we can put something else in that position. It's fifteen-year no taxes and although we have the, right now we have the people looking to put the senior living in it, which is fine, if they can do it, I'm grateful, I'm glad they can do it, but if they can't, it needs to come down and make a footprint for some type of a business to go in there, either it's a small business or a large business, whatever we can do to get jobs here. I think we should use on the green space, not on the building itself, it's just, it's a big building to take care of. And as far as what the city council has done, I think we've done everything we can to try to get people to go in it, try to keep, do the best we can, but we also hold back and make sure it gets used in the right way and make sure that their finances are in order and that's why it has never came to fruition, just, it falls apart right at the last thing when the financing comes out. So I think that we need to just move on with the demo and, and continue on with it. And I said in my last debate, I think the tower's gotta be saved, we've said that all along. And the best place for the, the tower is the museum, needs to go in there to preserve the history of the state hospital and the history of our county, so that's where I'm kinda at on that deal.
Thank you.
I'm sure that Scott's gonna go a little longer on this one. And he can have my extra time.
Yeah, I could go plenty. Do you wanna read the question or you want me to just go for it?
You go for it.
Okay. The footprint's kinda one of the key words here and I think the footprint of the RTC is one of the features that increases its value in this case. It's a unique historical and architectural asset and we must stop talking about demolition and start talking about development of this asset of our city. For the last twelve to eighteen months, the council has been so focused on demolition that there have been missed opportunities. And even most recently, when the, a local group, the gymnastics group, came and wanted to develop a plan to occupy part of this gymnasium, they got nothing but the cold shoulder. Everybody got together and they sang the song along with Bruce Thome, saying, you know, "Yes" and "We're happy and we're building Fergus Falls" and then they, then they come to the vote on that and "No, we're not doing it." And I just, I couldn't believe it, I was embarrassed, I was angry. And I think that if we can't even work with one of our local groups who's trying to put something together, that just really gets under my skin and I just don't understand it. I think that a lot more could have been done and could yet be done to work with not only the gymnastics group, but with other groups that are looking to try and make something happen up here. I think that our city leaders have done what they've been directed to do, to a large part by the council, and so I, I lay a lot of this on the council. I'm not trying to place all of this just on the, on the city staff. I think that the idea that the prospective developer had to take on the whole thing in one big gulp is what really held things up for ten years. The city's method was to try and get a developer to take the whole thing on in one jump and it was a little bit too big of a bite for just about anybody, not that it was impossible, but it was difficult. And so why not shift the approach? Go to breaking it up into smaller pieces on paper where you can have shared wall agreements, you can sell it in different ways. There are lots of creative ways to do this and it's been done in lots of places all over the country and there's lots of examples to follow. This isn't a unique situation that we can't solve by following some other examples. I think that the council has gotten impatient and wants to show some kind of progress and some kind of action and as a result, they voted in twenty eighteen to demolish almost the entire thing. And then, one month later, out of the blue sky comes American Covenant Senior Housing with a plan to develop the part of the campus, the east and west wings, which just two months before that, the council said, "No one will ever be interested in that, we've just gotta knock it down." Ha! Surprise, there's interest. And in the last year, I'm aware of developers and interested parties that have expressed interest in establishing schools of various kinds, veteran services for PTSD or traumatic brain, traumatic brain injury, first responder services, a boutique hotel, a museum, restaurants, condos, apartments. There've been all kinds of ideas that have been brought forward and they have basically been ignored. And I think that's a terrible thing and we need to get rolling on development, not demolition. We need to embrace this legacy and sell it.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with you, Mr. Kwame. Serving on the city council is a big-time commitment and can be unpredictable. Tell us about your ability to serve in this capacity. Additionally, communication with your constituents is important since you reflect their interests. If elected, how will you stay connected to the people you represent?
Well, the, the advantage that I've got in this area is that my job allows me to pretty much set my own schedule. I work more than full-time, but I often work in the evenings and as needed, where I need to be and what I need to do. So that's a real advantage. My experience in business, working in concessions in particular, also has given me the ability to deal with unpredictable situations. Working outdoors, in that kind of a business, it can be the weather, it can be transportation, it can be inventory problems, you can have staffing issues, the show goes on whether you like it or not and you've gotta learn to roll with it and I did. My degree is in communication and I believe that I've got a pretty good background in how to develop relationships with people and how to communicate well. In one of the earlier forums that the Daily Journal and Pig Access sponsored, I suggested the possibility that perhaps we'd use the radio a little more for the council people, the possibility that perhaps we'd use the radio a little more for the council people, for example, to be on the radio the way the mayor does and the way that the city administrator does, to bring our thoughts and our knowledge about what the goings-on of the council is to the people by radio. And I might have also mentioned even at that time that the Daily Journal, you know, I think could even be used a little more effectively that way, where maybe we need some kind of a regular column, or it's not depending on their reporters to tell our story, but maybe council members in a rotation or as volunteers, however it might be worked out, where we could, we could publish a regular column in the journal with, you know, news from the council, that kind of a thing. I'm accessible. I've still got a landline, and that's on purpose. I'm accessible, people can find me, I'm in the book. You can come knock on my door, I'm on East Lakeside Drive up by Lake Alice. Email is easy. And so I intend to be accessible and remain that way, and I look forward to talking to the people in Fergus Falls. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rachels.
Serving it is a, is a big commitment. I mean, it's, Mr. Appert, one of the first debates we had, he talked about all the time and the taxing and the, and the mileage, and I didn't want to hear that, because it's more than I ever realized it was we did. I mean, we just do our job, and it's part of the deal. And I, I own a business, I'm a self-employed guy, I do have time to move around and flexibility. And so that's a huge part of benefit to me to be able to do that. As far as communicating with the people, you get, you receive phone calls. I do have a landline, too, and, and so I get phone calls weekly, and so we return them back and do the best we can with them and pass them on to our staff. And the staff is the one that takes care of, you know, we just, we're just the in-between for our staff is what we are. And knowing who to direct that question that they, you know, to answer, or to answer for them is a very good part of what we have to do. And I just, communication is probably the easiest thing for me to communicate back to the people. They come to my shop, I'll visit with them there. I don't push anybody away unless we're doing something that we've got to get done. But otherwise, communication is very simple for me. I think I'm very, I did very well in the last eight years getting back to everybody and talking to them and answering their questions. So I'll just kind of leave it at that.
Thank you. Next question. "Another important issue to many citizens is a community aquatic facility. A citizen-led committee has presented findings and recommendations for next steps. What is your view on the project, Mr. Rachels?"
I'm in full support of this project, and the biggest thing is it's a citizen-led committee that done it, and they went ahead and did everything. They're looking, working on their financing now and how they're going to figure it out and where, they pretty much picked a spot. I know there's some communicator, or some differences of opinion where it should go, but I believe it should go where they picked at the RTC. I'm 100% behind it. It's just getting the funding in place and how we're going to figure out how to do it, if it's feasible, and how much we can, we can spend on a place. The best thing about it is the citizens will get to vote on this when it comes down time to do it. I believe it's going to be probably two years. It'll be warped into, or looped into other pieces of the property of a plan we're having and, so I'm, I think that the aquatic facility's a long time waiting. It should be, it should, it should be something coming, but its biggest thing is led by the community, and it's a community-driven project.
Thank you. Mr. Kwame.
I strongly support the development of an aquatic facility. I think that the need is there, the interest is there, and the funding will be there for this. And I, my preference would be for it to be a year-round facility, and I've spoken of that in the past. And I think that the way that Rod Spedahl laid out his view of this, I think is something that I can really connect with and support. To work toward a long-term, year-round facility by pulling together various aspects of various entities in town, whether it's the YMCA, the schools, even the hospital, the park and rec department, to get a long-term plan together for a year-round facility. Perhaps we start with an outdoor facility first, but put it in a place where that can expand and incorporate indoor year-round facility, and I think that would be a terrific way to go, and that would be what I would strongly support. As a first step in a way to get the ball rolling, I think that putting a splash pad in would be a good first thing to do. And that could be done relatively inexpensively and relatively quickly within the next couple of years. And then to work toward these other steps along the way, to build the outdoor facility, to build the twenty, or the year-round facility, then going on from there. As far as the location, I would prefer a more centrally-located spot in town. When the analysis was done about where to put it, the committee looking, only looked at city-owned properties. They didn't look at what made it be the best place, what might be a better advantage. It was just parks and city-owned properties, and there may have been good rationale for that, but I don't think that that necessarily identified the best place. I would rather see a more centrally-located place. I oppose putting it at the Kirkbright Park. I think that's a mistake. The RTC site has many better uses, and putting a water park in there is going to overtake prime space and take away from the pastoral setting that that place has to sell. And I think that putting it there is a mistake. I think that we need it in town, and we want it in town, and we just need to put it someplace else and develop a year-round facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final question. "The city council is a nonpartisan body of government, yet our country is more polarized than ever. You'll be working with aldermen, staff, and constituents who may think differently than you do. Tell us how you will successfully work as part of a team for the benefit of Fergus Falls, Mr. Kwame."
Well, if the question is, "May I think differently than the rest of the people?", I think it's clear that I do. I have some question about it, I think differently much of the time, because I've got an entrepreneurial mindset. I'm looking for opportunities. I'm seeking the opportunities and the solutions. I want to focus on long-term goals. I want to have a sound rationale for the decisions that are being made. And I think that too often, the city council has been reacting and hasn't been as proactive as they could be, particularly in light of a long-term view of things. As the idea of being on a team and working for the benefit of the team, I think the success for the team, in my case, in this position, would be to be bringing ideas to the table, asking good questions, understanding the issues that are on, on the table, not being a rubber stamp. I think that communicating with the fellow council members, with the staff, with the public is a key. And to that end, I would remember the words of Stephen Covey, who in his Seven Habits of Highly Effective People, number five, he says, "Seek first to understand, then to be understood." And I believe that that is something I have taken to heart in my life, and I would bring to the table in this case. And as Darren Appert was mentioning even yesterday, "Treat others as you would like to be treated." That's been a foundation in my life as well, in my business, in my family, and that's the way I would, I would want to approach this, working with the team here in the council, on the staff, and with the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rachels.
You know, one of my biggest sayings is just, because somebody else thinks something different than you do, it's, they're not wrong. You know, they're not wrong, they've just got to understand that they, they think differently than we do. And so as a council, you know, the first couple of years of my last, my last season, we had, we were not getting along, we were kind of apart. We worked on getting together, we worked on communicating better, and then we found out we can get this great momentum what we have right now of moving forward and making our town better. And so the hardest thing is to do is to work with somebody that you don't, you know, don't have a personal relationship, you know, we're just, we all get to know each other. And as, as this, as once we get to, to get working together as a council, the staff comes along and the staff works a lot better. We are so, we should be so thankful of the staff we have in this city. I've been a part of watching it grow and watching the people that are here, and we're very fortunate of our staff and what we have. And I know Mr. Kwame thinks we kind of rubber-stab things, but we don't. We work hard on it. And the council meetings are kind of the shortest part of this whole deal. And working behind the scenes, trying to keep everything moving forward and moving the positive part of the city is probably the best thing you could possibly do here. And you have to be a team. And the council has been a team in the last couple of years, and we've made great strides in this, and I think we should just continue on, and I want to continue on moving forward with that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This comes to the end of time for questions. We'll wrap up by hearing closing comments from each of you as to why your constituents should vote for you. You will have two minutes each. We will start with Scott Rachels.
I just want to thank everybody for coming today. It's been a great thing. This is our third debate, and Scott, and I just, I want to thank Scott for running our respectable, we've been very respectful to each other, and it's, it's a good thing to be able to talk and think differently and not hold it against anybody, and so I appreciate that. I just, it's, the last eight years have been great for me. I enjoy this job. It has a lot of ups and downs. There's a lot of things that we have to do that I don't like doing, but it's part of our job. I just want to continue on making that, helping make the decisions and make this town grow better. And just one thing I want to touch on, on the gymnasium thing we're talking about with the, with the gymnast, their, their contract ended the ninety days. We didn't tell them no, we just didn't give them an extension. So just to kind of clear that up, but they can still come back and ask for an extension and come back, and we're wide open to talking to them, so. And they know that, I've talked to them personally, so. But just to say, I just want to say thanks to everybody. I just, soon, I just love to keep serving you in the city. I'm not going anywhere. This is my home, it's going to be my home, and I just appreciate your vote on next Tuesday, the sixth, I think it is. Thanks.
Thank you. Scott Kwame.
Thank you. And again, also, thank you to those who've come and those who are listening. Appreciate your interest and your desire to see positive things for our town. My approach, as you've probably picked up, is to really try to make the case for the RTC. There have been a lot of comments made about how this has been a real dividing issue in town, and I think if you go back and look, you'll find that there were a lot of complaints when the ice arena was being built. There were even complaints when the library was being built. There are reasons to be in disagreement, and there have been resolutions to those over the past, and we can resolve this one as well. There's going to be some things to overcome, but it's not impossible to overcome those things. We need to provide the city staff with the tools that they need to do their jobs. We need to have a long-term view of things. Again, the three things, the three things that bring me to the table here, economic development, maintaining the assets of the city, and bringing a vision, bringing creative thinking, a can-do attitude, and a long-term view to the city council. Economic development, we've got to replace what we're going to be losing at the Hoot Lake Power Plant, and we've got not only good reason, but a good place to start to build and work toward economic development here in town. Maintaining assets, again, I've talked about the RTC, we've got the river, we've got the streets, we've got Lake Alice, we've got parks. We've got to maintain these assets and make the most of them. And I think that, again, bringing a long-term view, this is the, this town doesn't have to be the town where you go to die. This has to be, this can be the town where you go to start. This is the town where we can make things begin. My last comment's got to be on the RTC. It's a giant, and it's been said over and over. It's too big, it's big. And I think that people have been afraid of this giant. I think they've said, "This foe is too big for us." And that's, my approach is, we need to make friends with this giant. We need this giant on our team. We need this giant on our front four, and then we are going to be effective as we go forward. We can, and my intention would be to make that happen. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you both. Thank you, everyone, for attending today. Join us tomorrow to meet the candidates from Ward Four. Please remember to vote on November 6th. Ward Two voting takes place at the Armory. Polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Behalf of myself, Gene Bowman, and the rest of Newt Kewanis, thank you. Have a great day.[1781.86][1781.86][applause]
Good.[1783.86][1783.86][end of transcript]